Well, welcome back to the first of two afternoon sessions to the Public Accountability Committee's inquiry into the oversight of the government's response to the COVID-19 pandemic. This afternoon, we hear from two portfolio ministers, the Honourable Don Harwin and the Honourable Victor Domanello, as well as a variety of staff and senior public servants. We might start by swearing in those who need to be sworn in. Ministers, I remind you that having taken an oath of office, you're not required to be sworn in today. And Ms. Rose Webb and Ms. Kate Foy, this is not your first attendance before this inquiry, so welcome back. You're not required to undertake a further oath. But if each of Mr. Paul Saraband, Ms. Kristin Daglish-Rose and Mr. Luke Walton could give us your name, your agency, and then take either an oath or an affirmation, we may as well start with you, Mr. Walton.
Thank you. Luke Walton, I'm the Executive Director of Planning Policy at the Department of Planning, Environment. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thanks, Mr. Walton. Maybe if you pull that microphone a bit closer. Mr. Saraband?
Paul Saraband, Director of Policy and Legislation.
Again, Mr. Saraband, if you'd mind pulling that microphone closer.
Paul Saraband, Director of Policy and Legislation, Liquor and Gaming at Department of Customer Service. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Thanks, Mr. Saraband. Ms. Daglish-Rose?
Kristin Daglish-Rose, I'm the Director of Stakeholder Engagement and Community Education in the Better Regulation Division of the Department of Customer Service. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thanks very much. Ministers, you'll know that in large part this hearing is in a response to the prior evidence from stakeholders we've had in each of your respective portfolios. If either of you wish to give a brief opening statement, now is your opportunity.
There you go. Thank you, David, and Mr. Chairman, and whoops. Yes, I noted your letter and I've certainly read through the transcript with interest. Couple of things I would say. First of all, it's conceded that the Arts and Culture Sector, and in particular the performing arts, is without doubt one of the top three most impacted sectors, I'll describe it that way, of any in Australia. It is severe, and I'm certainly well aware of that. And I have to say that, and note in passing, that while I was engaged in the very early part of the pandemic response for the Arts Portfolio from Good Friday to July 4th, I was not the minister.
That was the interregnum period, wasn't it?
Interregnum period. So during that period, obviously, the Premier was the acting minister and much of the work fell heavily on my Deputy Secretary Kate Foy, who's here. So I will lean on her for, in particular, some of the early causes, or some of the early stages of the response. I would make the point that sometimes there's this view that the Arts and Culture Sector, the Arts Minister has responsibility, for want of a better term, from cradle to grave. But that's just simply not the case. It never has been. I think that would have been obvious to members of this committee who sat on the earlier committee to do with live music, which dealt with many things, but included in all of that was live music. Music's a good example. Music education falls within the education portfolio. Emerging new music falls within the arts portfolio. For-profit music and the venues they perform in is not something that the Arts Portfolio generally has an overview with. Having said that, it has been a deliberate strategy since I set up the Art Forum Boards after the election for contemporary music, leading into that commercial sector, for us to have a much stronger partnership. That's the reason why the Contemporary Music Art Forum Advisory Board was set up. That's the reason, for example, why Emily Collins was put on, from Music New South Wales, was put on that board because of her role in terms of emerging artists and, if you like, less commercial side of live music. And that's the reason why I've this year appointed John Wardle and Nick Pickard to, well, John Wardle to the Contemporary Music Art Forum Advisory Board and Nick Pickard to the Festivals Board. So, but the music, the music in effect puts into sharp focus the fact that a lot of the things that are of interest are not always things that are in my purview. So, for example, a lot of the evidence you heard from Carrie Gupp Glasscock, a person for whom I have great admiration, who also has been, serves on one of the Art Forum Advisory Boards, was mostly to do with the Old 505 Theatre, which is a for-profit venue which she personally owns. So therefore, it would not, just for example, that venue would not be eligible for any funding as such, either from our usual programmes or from our rescue programmes. Now, that might be a shortcoming which I'm happy for the committee to explore, but I'm just pointing out some things like that. The last thing I would say is that there was quite a bit of evidence on the day from various people about Create New South Wales. I thought a lot of it was quite unfair and, in fact, I just wanted to make sure that the committee was aware of the media statement that Penelope Benton put out quite soon after that hearing where she apologises to Create New South Wales staff and self-evidently makes it quite clear that she gave evidence to the committee that on balance she felt she could no longer stand by. I wonder if all the committee are aware of that and saw it. That's why I brought a couple of copies. Happy to table it. I'll keep, where's the?
It's coming.
And maybe Chair, if I just hand another, or perhaps if you could start it with Ms. Ward and you could circulate.
We'll get copies made and have it circulated.
And she makes it quite clear where she says, "Some comments were made about communications from the Create New South Wales team in regard to guidance on reopening that we retract and clarify." So I would ask people to bear that in mind. And I think it is particularly, I wanted to note the very outstanding work that Rebecca Dean has done as a member of the Create New South Wales staff, heading the Project Awake Task Force, which doesn't, if you like, trade under the name Project Awake, but is doing a lot of work and I'm happy to explore some of that if committee members want to and she's doing a great job. So I'll just leave it there.
I don't think the inverted commas found their way onto handside, but we note them. Minister Domanello?
Thanks, Chair. So long as what Minister Harwin has said, obviously, my direct responsibility is in relation to liquor and gaming and there's a whole body of work that we've done in response to the pandemic there and happy to take questions on that. But there's a whole lot of other cross-cluster relationships that require movement. For example, we just set up the Alfredo Dining Task Force and from memory, there are eight different agencies on that to get a venue opened up and opened out. So we got, obviously, liquor and gaming, we got transport, we got health, we got police, we got Small Business Commissioner, we got local councils and we've got.
Planning.
Sorry? Oh, and planning, of course. Seven. And there's one other, Food Authority, eight. So whilst, I'm similar to Minister Harwin, you know, I will answer things as I can in my patch, but obviously, there's going to be a whole lot of other crossover issues that maybe can.
David, I'm just going to make, with your indulgence, one other brief point, which is that we've been aware for some time that government isn't as joined up as it should be on some of these issues. It was very apparent to, and if I could include my colleague, Minister Domanello, and Minister Ayers in this, the three of us recognised straight after the state election that we needed to do quite a lot of work on this. And in fact, the idea of having a joint select committee on the night-time economy was the initiative of we three ministers, which we took to Cabinet. And I think, and then that joint select committee was, yes, indeed, very successfully chaired by a member of your committee here, the Honourable Natalie Ward. And you now see the outcome of our initiative and the committee's good work, which is this strategy. And this was, in fact, this sort of cross-portfolio work was in a high stage of, or an advanced stage of preparation when COVID hit. And I think a lot of the things that would have been rolled out have been delayed by COVID. I'll just leave that there.
Well, I think that's been a repeating theme in all of the work we've done. This has put strains upon those cross-agency connections and that's been one of the greatest challenges. And probably with that, I'll hand over to the opposition.
Before we do, Chair, I'm sorry, just may we table that strategy document?
I think it's a publicly available document. If the minister wants to table it.
I'm happy to table it.
Well, we'll accept it. And I'll hand over the opposition.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, ministers, for coming. I think that is quite a useful discussion upfront, just to canvass some of that history. And I want to acknowledge upfront that it's a very different discussion that we're having now to the one government or the Parliament was having two years ago. And that is absolutely recognised. I think the Chair indicated the real reason we're here, which was the evidence that was taken, really as a range of venues turned up to the last hearing. And I think all committee members were really impacted by what we heard, which was the worry that 85% of them might close within 12 months. If they don't get some sort of support, it might be regulatory.
Before the end of this hearing.
Yeah, yeah, no, true, true. It might be regulatory, it might be financial support. And that was really the key thing, I think, that alarmed the committee. But we're grateful for you attending to respond to those concerns. I might start, Minister Domanello, with you. One of the good things that's happened since that hearing is that there have been changes to the capacity for entertainment venues. That was announced as kicking off on the 1st of October. One of the, and I'll quote here from one of the media reports on it, "Live Music New South Wales venues to open at 50% capacity from next month, that is the 1st of October." One of the concerns is that optimism wasn't reflected in the Public Health Order. In fact, the capacity changes have been in a much smaller range of venues rather than music venues across the board, the sort of venues who turned up, who we heard evidence from. Can you give us any background to those changes?
That's a matter for Minister Hazard, I understand he's following us this afternoon.
We've got him this afternoon.
Yeah, so I can't speak for him, Mr. Ryan, but I hear what you're saying.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I might, I'll ask you about the, we'll certainly ask Minister Hazard about this in the Public Health Order. What I will ask you about is the licensing aspect of this. So in the Public Health Order, what has essentially been allowed to move to 50% capacity is an entertainment facility. Now, that's a theatre, cinema, music hall, concert hall, dance hall and the like, but does not include a pub or registered club. So that's understood. Of the venues that turned up though, the concern here is many of them aren't going to fall in that definition. So, for example, we had Crowbar turn up. They took, they're a primary purpose music venue. They're putting on a lot of acts. They run in a range of states. They're on a full hotel licence. They won't be impacted by this Public Health Order if that's the case. Is that, is that your understanding from a licensing point of view?
All right, look, I have a throw to Ms. Webb because I don't have the specific details in relation to that case.
I do believe that's what the Public Health Order says. So there's a Public Health Order for licensed venues and that is different to the one that you're speaking to.
Yeah, so they're a pub under this, they're put on music, but really as a licensed category, they're a pub. They're not an entertainment facility. They don't get to move to 50% capacity.
Yes, but again, that's been crafted in the Public Health Order.
Correct, yeah.
That's your primary instrument or, you know, that's your starting point. Then we lock in behind that.
Yeah.
So, and again, that's dictated by health considerations, as you appreciate.
Yeah.
Different venues, different capacities, indoor, outdoor, different activities. So all these discussions are taking place.
To be upfront about my concerns here, it's, you know, this, the committee was concerned, the Public Health Order has been implemented. We'll talk about that with health. But it's really the complex interaction of the Public Health Order with the even more complex licensing system, of which health is certainly not an expert. In fact, there are few experts. It's so complicated. That's really causing the problem here. So these venues turned up worried they might close. They've been offered a lifeline. But certainly, in many instances, that interaction's meant they haven't yet got it on the regulatory side. That's the concern here.
Well, I think that, as I'm understanding the issue, it's that there's two Public Health Orders applying here. The actual licensing regulations themselves don't impact on capacity, except if they have, don't impact on the COVID-related capacity issues.
Yeah, well, there's one Public Health Order, but it obviously interacts with the definitions under the licensing scheme. So that's the concern.
Sorry, I'm not quite following this, Chair. Can you give me an example?
Yeah, well, so an entertainment facility moves to 50% capacity. Music venues thought they might apply to them. It doesn't apply to Crowbar, which is on a pub licence, a full hotel.
There's an express exclusion for small bars.
It's in the one in four square metres rule would apply.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they can't move to that 50% capacity. That would make a real difference.
They're still limited by the four-square metre rule.
Yeah, yeah, no, exactly. So, you know, something else, for example, a very small venue, Gasoline Pony at Marekville.
Yeah.
Tiny venue, put on a lot of music.
Yeah.
Again, on a hotel licence.
But again, what weighs the issue there? Because they'd be limited by the four-square metre rule.
Yeah, and they won't be able to move to 50% capacity under this Public Health.
But that's a function of the Public Health Orders rather than the licensing regulation.
The primary thing is the four-square metre and we haven't deviated off that yet.
Yeah, well, it's an interaction of the Public Health Order and the licensing system.
I think the question is about the dividing line. There's a fairly arbitrary dividing line. Someone, if they're a music hall providing live music, they can do the 50% rule, which can make it viable to open. But if you're a small bar providing live music, you can't do the 50% rule there because it's not viable for them to open. That dividing line seems very arbitrary.
Does a music venue contain alcohol?
Yes, many of them do, in order to keep the doors open, yeah.
And that's under the Public Health Order?
Yeah, well, some of these, you can be on either side of that dividing line and be serving alcohol.
Because I know, and again, I'm not going to speak for Dr. Chan or the Minister of Health, but, you know, one of the concerns is indoor alcohol, people letting their guard down, you know, and the associated risk. So I, again, it's a matter for them to answer.
Yeah, well, someone close to the line, the Oxford Art Factory, so this is an on-premises licence. It is clear that it's a theatre for public entertainment use. It'd, you know, be classically thought of as probably the music theatre venue in, you know, contemporary music theatre venue. Totally unsure whether they do or do not comply under the Public Health Order and unable to confirm. Can you give us any confirmation about?
Honestly, that would have to be a question of Minister Hazard.
Well, the problem is Minister Hazard will be unable to answer questions about the licensing. These are questions about the complex licensing system in New South Wales.
But with respect, if I may, Minister, but with respect, the issue is not about the licensing. The issue is about how the Public Health Order treats various categories of venues. I think everyone concedes that they're, and I'm just speaking generally here, not about this specific instance. Everyone concedes there are anomalies at the edge of Public Health Orders.
Trust me, we have those doubts all the time.
Yeah, yeah.
But the problem is, it really is the Public Health Order that determines, not the licensing.
But the difficulty is the ambiguity.
We had about three conversations going on over the top of each other.
Had you, the ministers finished?
Just to back that in, like, I'm literally sitting in Crisis Cabinet, have been there from day one. And I can tell you that, you know, the first question that gets raised and asked is around health. And they frame up the orders and I accept without question that, to your point, there's always going to be friction around the edges. And it's not just whether it's in this regulatory environment, it could be other things such as gaming machines and stuff. There's always friction around the edges, but that goes to interpretation of the orders. And they're the things that constantly get fine-tuned.
Yeah, and I think that we're grateful for you coming. We're really asking for help on that issue because this is not around the edges, just to give you some examples. So Crowbar on that pub licence, you know, a tiny venue like Gasoline Pony on a pub licence, not eligible. Oxford Art Factory, not eligible, probably not eligible, but certainly uncertain. The venue, the Minister Harwin referred to, the Old 505, probably on a nightclub licence, so certainly not eligible.
Inmore Theatre Factory?
Exactly. The Dock in Redfern plays a lot of music, a small bar, not eligible. Mary's Underground, the former basement, saved for music, a hotel licence. This is Lazybones in Marekville, an on-premises licence that's attracted some attention. The committee went out to have a look at it, not eligible. This isn't around the edges. This is a case where they stated.
Sorry, point of order, Chair, I'm like, can I just, I'm not trying to quibble. They're important questions and I think they should be asked. I'm just trying to clarify what the question actually is. Are you looking for the minister to undertake to?
Yeah, no, exactly.
Yeah, to provide clarification on those venues.
Yeah, so there's a, these venues asked for help. This was a very welcome intervention. But because of the interaction between licensing and the Public Health Order, it's totally missed the mark for these venues. Is there anything we can do?
Yes, I can. I encourage you because I'm on the committee to open up the economy as much as I can. So I'm on your side. There's a constant tension between us and health. So I encourage you to raise this with Minister Hazard and I wish you all the best.
You're not allowed to disclose what goes on in Cabinet.
And I wish you all the best because I want to open up the economy, but in a COVID-safe way.
Yeah, and I think, to defend Minister Hazard's role, I mean, there's no way health would be experts in this licensing. It is so complex that that is, it's that interaction that's really providing the problem.
If I could respond with respect, they might not be licensing experts, but they're health experts.
Yeah, public health experts.
Public health experts and every decision is actually a public health decision. And the difference between, say, the City Recital Hall and some of the venues, there is a qualitative difference and that's why I believe the Public Health Order was formed in the way it was. Now, I accept therefore that that is going to be a problem for those people who perform in those venues. And it is important that they, as far as they can, prepare a COVID-safe operating plan and take it to health, just like Live Performance Australia did for venues such as the City Recital Hall, Belvoir Theatre, et cetera, et cetera. That's the process. I wonder, would you like to comment at all on that or have we got it covered, Deputy Secretary?
Only to say that there's a corollary with some of the work we've been doing with the live performances. It's a coordinated effort to understand and try and help those companies in the event of reopening. We aren't in the space of licensed venues.
Yeah.
But happy to take any information provided back to the ministers.
The key thing is that in terms of the Public Health Order, they have to be ticketed and seated.
Yes.
And if they're not ticketed and seated.
And those venues are prepared to do that.
That's exactly, not prepared to do that.
Are prepared to do that.
Well, if they're prepared to do it and they've got a COVID-19 safety plan in terms of operation.
In terms of its health.
Then they should be bowling it up to the Minister for Health and Health New South Wales and doing what they can to try and reopen.
Yeah, and I appreciate those comments. It's really the contradiction between what's been announced, what they thought has happened and what is in reality the Public Health Order. I might just ask Minister Domanello, one of the issues is quite a few venues have suspended their operations. At the moment, liquor and gaming is reporting 532 licences have been temporarily suspended. That's up significantly. Can you give us an idea of how much that's up or any sense you've got from the data you have available about how many venues have suspended their operations?
I don't have the up-to-date, but do you have, Rose or Paul?
I don't think we have that. We could probably take it on notice and get used to it.
Take it on notice, but anecdotally, it's obviously had a catastrophic impact and we accept that. That's why I was part of the task force with the Treasurer and Deputy Premier at the time to do our best to open up the economy. So, you know, as you'd appreciate, Mr. Ryan, like, we actually opened up ahead of the schedule, ahead of the roadmap set out through National Cabinet. And I think we're about a month or two ahead. And in fact, if it wasn't for the outbreak in Victoria, you know, we probably wouldn't be even having these discussions. We were pretty much almost through the last gate and then, you know, things happened and, you know, we had to respond accordingly. But even the task force I've just set up with the Alfredo, you know, they are absolutely on their knees, particularly in cities like that.
Yeah, understood.
And we accept that. We accept that.
Which is appreciated. The second part of the, really the issue that was put in front of the committee, and this is true on the Alfredo side of things and also true for these music venues, was they're asking for financial support. That financial support has happened in Victoria, nearly $30 million for specific music venues, $87.5 million to activate outdoor dining. That hasn't happened here.
Yep.
I note the City of City announcement.
But that was $20 million. We put in $15 million into that.
Yeah, yeah. So I note that.
But before that, we did put in $750 million for the businesses right throughout the, you know, the mid of the pandemic. The first tranche was 10, you know, to keep people alive and then another three to reopen. So there has been business support right throughout and I know that through service we were turning that around in 72 hours, getting money into their accounts. But the thing that the venues say to me when I speak to them is, they've had the financial support. They need to open up and that's why we did that task force. They need more people to come through. It is a confidence thing, like even the, Mr. Sveady from the Man of War pub, he was telling me that over the long weekend, he was one of the few that was open and he was turning people away.
Yeah.
Because it was a confidence thing. You go there.
He told the Herald that, too.
But returning to Minister.
He told the Herald that.
Well, I'm glad he told me first.
Returning to Minister Harwin's point, it's really those performance venues that are hardest hit. So I accept what you're saying, but it's really, any sort of performance venue is absolute. Their economics are marginal at best.
Yeah, I accept that. It's devastating.
They were certainly turning up, asking for financial help. It has happened in Victoria.
Yeah.
It hasn't happened here. That's specific funding for them. Is there any prospect?
Well, there's, that's, there's a budget coming up and I can't, it's not for me to second guess what the Treasurer will do.
Any prospect of?
We live in the best state in the country by a country mile. And if you look at our response to the pandemic, where we've opened up, the economy kept it open and yet managed to deal with the pandemic and carry the lion's share of inward-bound passengers. It's just extraordinary and I just want to pay credit to the public servants. Like, you know, I'm, I've never been this close to them in a COVID-safe way, of course. And it is extraordinary, their expertise. I'm just so proud. We should all be very grateful for them.
Yeah, I acknowledge those comments.
Is there hope? Absolutely. Our economy will be the very first to bounce back.
To take you back to that specific financial assistance question, because I think that was what was put to us. That's really why I'm pressing it.
I repeat what I said. That's going to be the Treasury.
Yeah, well, can I ask you about outdoor dining? So $100 million was the ask from local government in New South Wales, $87.5 million provided by Victoria. They just recognise this won't happen for councils unless they actually get some help to waive fees, make this happen on the ground. Won't the result in New South Wales be slowed down, getting people outdoors, all the things you're arguing for, without that financial help here? Don't need that to drive this.
Again, I'm not the Treasurer for one of the particular industries.
But you're the Alfredo King. Don't you need some money?
Oh, yeah, we are and we're slashing red tape and that's one of the beauty, you know, great things that we've done. You know, we've slashed, we've taken, I'm saying, on average, it would take liquor and gaming, on average, seven weeks. Seven weeks.
We will come back to that.
Well, I'll take the point of order.
I think we know where it's going, so we'll.
And it's come down to three days. Now, you know, sure, there's money and I accept that point, and I accept that point. But, you know, time is money also. So if we can slash the time to get people through the front door, that's, that's my job. Now, you know, it's a matter for the Treasurer, you'd ask the Treasurer and the Minister for Local Government as to whether they've got anything in the pipeline in relation to that, because I'm quite frankly not across that and nor should I be.
But you'd accept it helps. I think that's what you're saying.
Point of order again. The Minister should be allowed to finish his answer.
I think there was a semicolon there that you missed and so I'll go back to the Minister.
So, so, yeah, I accept absolutely, but those decisions are for other ministers. My job is to get rid of as much red tape as I can. And can I just correct the record? I said Man of War, it's Fortuna War, the pub, Mr. Sveady as well.
We can have a pregnant pause.
Can I have one follow on that?
Four seconds.
It's, you make the point about the red tape, but that's only half of it. You're actually asking businesses to take a risk in a very difficult environment already, to open up for longer hours, to pay staff wages, to, if you are going to be the Alfresco King, as you've said.
No, no, that's what you said.
Surely we're going to, we need to meet small businesses in particular halfway and say, we're not just cutting red tape, but we're actually going to assist you to do that.
Well, again, I've been on the task force and when I'm speaking to industry, what they want, most importantly, are people through the front door. That's how they make their money. They want to get back to normal and my job is to help them open their doors. That's, that's the most important thing that we can do, get customers through that front door in a safe way. You know, having corporate welfare is not a long term position. The short, quick fix is getting people through the front door. We did the corporate, the government corporate welfare when we had to shut them down completely, which was just completely devastating for all of us. But now the priority must be to get people back into the streets, back in buying in a safe way.
Well, I have a couple of short questions that I hand to Ms. Kate Femen. But the evidence, the evidence we had from the venues was pretty clear, that they needed the opening. But without some additional cash support, they're going to face a whole series of those, for profit venues are going to face closure. And it wasn't, they weren't saying one or the other, they said they needed both.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, you got the wrong minister here for the second part of the equation, that's all. I can answer the first part of it.
Well, Mr. Harwin, I think you acknowledged that the scope of the arts portfolio traditionally has ended where for profit venues happen. Given so much of our culture, so much of our art happens in that for profit space, do you accept that, that that for profit space also requires support and probably requires attention from your portfolio?
Well, effectively, you're asking me for an opinion, David. Look, I will say this though. After the last election, I made a number of changes to the way we do things in the arts. And one of the things that I asked Create to focus on in a restructure of their activities was building up a partnerships and policy section of the agency that would work to start building better partnerships with other agencies within the New South Wales bureaucracy so that we could be more focused on these issues and that work was starting to get underway when COVID hit. Hasn't advanced as far as we, as we would have liked. But it is the case that we need to have good, joined up policy with other parts of the other agencies that are working on that. And the one who mostly works on that, may I say, is, apart from those who are actually dealing with the venues like planning, like Liquor and Gaming, is in fact Destination New South Wales, where they are festival, particularly where it's in the regions, but where they are festivals or where they are large scale commercial theatre or events like rock concerts. They are in that space and in a sense, it's because of the capacity to drive interstate visitation or intra-state visitation in the visitor economy. So we are working in that area and just recently, for example, I have appointed to my new festivals board, a member of the Destination New South, a very senior member of the Destination New South Wales staff to ensure that we start getting better synergy in that respect. So I think what you're saying is conceded, David, and this is, what COVID has done has put that into sharp relief.
It's put the blowtorch on those existing fractures in their government policy. And my last question before I hand over to Ms. Kate Femen is that the two areas that they were saying to us, we're going to lose venues and permanently lose venues and permanently lose those cultural assets, with the small bars which have live music and those medium sized venues, the Metros, the Enmore Theatre, the Factory. And they are saying, they told us unambiguously, unless they get some kind of cash funding to see them through this year, they're going to be lost and then permanently lost and they'll be replaced by apartments or other non-cultural venues. I suppose we're looking for comfort that you acknowledge the scale of the problem and you're not willing to let it happen.
Mr. Chair, seriously, I wake up in sweat sometimes thinking about how bad this is for not just the country, for the world. It really is deeply troubling and we acknowledge that. Just, but again, talking about my portfolio, you know, we've waived about fifty million dollars of licensing fees. I'm not saying it answers your specific question, because in addition to the seven hundred and fifty million we've given businesses, you're saying, you know, is there more? I guess I'm saying is, I'm not in a position to say that.
Mr. Harwin?
I think the, the broad, broadly defined art sector is like a lot of sectors across the economy. Frankly, we are losing too much and it's not good. It's not good. And I think certainly within the area of my portfolio, I've done my best to make sure we don't lose independent arts organisations. That's the particular area we fund. And I'm, I'm pleased and proud that there has not been a single independent arts organisation that, that's gone under because of what we've put in place. And to be fair to the federal government, what they've put in place with Jobkeeper, which is actually quite critical in the art sector. Without Jobkeeper, we'd be in a world of pain.
Ms. Femen?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, pretty much every witness mentioned that Jobkeeper has been a lifesaver for their businesses and their staff.
Stuart, I wonder if I could just have some more water. Thank you.
Yep.
Sure. I just wondered whether, because a number of the witnesses have talked about the concept of like, because they have to have less people in venues, the fifty percent, if you like, and even less in smaller venues, whether there has been any discussion around subsidies per ticket sales to assist venues break even or make a profit. We heard from a number of witnesses the other day that a lot of venues are now doing this, I'm sure you're both aware of it, now doing these ticket sales that include two drinks of alcohol, two alcoholic drinks as well to be able to. And like unless they, they sell those tickets for a greater price, then they, with the alcohol, then they don't break even, which isn't fantastic for, you know, from a health perspective, but also from, for the patrons themselves, having to spend more to basically spend stuff on, buy two glasses of alcohol. Have you got any thoughts on that particular, that particular measure that venues are also putting in place? But have you discussed subsidising or assisting with those costs in any way?
Which venues were you referring to, Kate?
Subsidising ticket sales. There was a number of them. I think Ms. Glascock might have said one as well as.
Yeah.
The.
Didn't Butchery say that to break even, she, wasn't it the case more that she was saying to break even, it had to be, and correct me if I'm wrong, my rereading of what was, that the ticket price plus the sale of two glasses would enable to her, to break even. I didn't think she was actually requiring two people to, to buy two tickets. But look, in any case, that's not important.
That's my recollection of the evidence. Enables it.
That people are buying tickets now, which includes two drinks.
Right, okay. Well, look, I would make this point. There probably wouldn't be very many performance spaces in New South Wales, even outside COVID, that frankly could get the return on capital they need to remain viable if it wasn't for the sale of beverages and food as well to subsidise their operations. So in, in a sense, that situation normal, it's obviously just even more crucial now than it would otherwise be. Now, as to, so, I mean, as to subsidising tickets, I think the approach we've, we've taken, I'm very happy to go through the approach of of our rescue package for independence, independent arts organisations operating in performance venues. But if you're asking about what's happening in commercial venues for for profit activities, then that's really outside the scope of what the arts portfolio is doing.
I think it's, I think it's both in some ways because there, for example, you've got the funding to various organisations to assist them to state the rescue package. But the question is whether there has been, was there consideration to also assist by subsidising those ticket sales? It's just a.
Well, now, you see that, you need to understand, well, let me, let me explain what's happening in, and I'm happy to go through it in detail, but just quickly in broad brush. Our approach with independent arts organisations has been more not to do things like subsidise tickets, but say, once it's get, once they are getting to the point where they are worried about whether they will be able to escape voluntary administration. Prior to that, we have, well, prior to that, we've been encouraging them, start interacting with Create, right? Open your books, let us look, let us work out what you need. And then when you get to the point where really you will fold unless you get it, we're not just subsidising tickets, we're subsidising everything to make sure they do not go under. So I can tell you, there are arts organisations in, in this city, and I won't particularise them, but I'm happy to explain why I'm not going to do that, who are basically performing right now, right? And were at the four square metre stage and now, of course, now that we've got fifty, who literally would have had to go into voluntary administration if we hadn't supplied rescue funds to them. And that's why we have supplied rescue funds to them. It's been a process where, you know, if they were going under, we step in and we give them all the money they need to keep trading until we're through this. That's what we're doing. We're not just subsidising tickets, we're subsidising everything.
So is that for every single organisation that Create, that Create New South Wales is responsible?
At this point, if, 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 if you're, if this is, that's what you're asking, I'm very happy to take you through in some detail how it works.
This is the rescue and restart package?
The rescue part of it, yeah.
Okay.
So, because obviously, as I think I've explained before in the House, I probably should go through that, but I don't want to take up your time.
Fill through the table, for example, lists of organisations that have received the funding as opposed to bringing that out.
I'll get to that, but I mean, I'll try to keep it quick, but it is detailed. Look, obviously, stage one rescue funding is twenty five million dollars. We've allocated almost half of that already. And it is to rescue those not-for-profit arts, independent arts organisations that are in financial distress. Funding is undertaking undertaken on a case by case basis using consistent and objective principles that are universally applied across every single application. Won't go through numbers yet, I'll just go through principles. The applications have come from a range of micro, small to medium and large companies covering a broad range of art forms. It's specifically designed to provide, to provide funds at the time when they need the funds the most. And it's also the case that funds continue to flow if things deteriorate further. If someone's assessed for a first time and found not to need them, they're then monitored. And if they get to the stage where they do need them, well, then they're included as well.
Minister, just in relation to the application process then, how?
I was just about to go through.
Most likely, have we got like a hundred percent success rate in terms of the organisations that are applying? How many, or in, put it another way, how many are rejected?
Well, no one's rejected as such, but it's not a hundred percent either. It's just a matter of timing, right? The only people that are rejected are people who effectively are not for profit in the, in independent arts organisations, right? No one is actually rejected.
Not for profit.
Sorry?
Who are not not for profit.
Who are for profit.
Oh, I'm sorry, people who are for profit. Yes, thank you for helping me that, with that, David. So, look, basically, Create New South Wales has worked with Treasury to develop a process and assessment model. Any allocations to companies that exceed a hundred thousand dollars, we also have price waterhouse cooperates come in to actually make sure that the assessment's been done correctly. The assessment model ensures that companies access all other applicable government funding support packages, right? So that's important, just to make sure they haven't missed anything. Make appropriate cost savings and access all of their relevant reserves, right? Eligible companies are requested to supply detailed historical and current financial information to establish a comparative base to assess the financial requirements of each company. It's applied on a case by case basis and the amount recommended for funding is, is calculated objectively based on an assessment of need. So it's effectively a forensic sort of accounting process rather than a, what would normally take place with the arts where it was based on merit and impact.
Do you have, do you have a say over the final, those final lists and what amount organisations get once, are they all recommended to you, Minister?
So the, I approve the recommended instalments and Treasury endorses them based on a, the process that's been, been gone through by Create New South Wales and verified where, where applicable by P W C. So effectively, they come to me in a form where they recommend a figure and I've just signed them all off exactly as recommended, every single one of them.
Okay, so none of that has been changed?
No, no, despite what you might hear, that is not a process that happens very often. Despite some of the evidence given to this committee.
So every.
But we can pursue that another time, no doubt.
So every organisation has received some kind of support, you're saying, financial support. What's the?
No, that's not what I said. I said that where, it's all a matter of timing, right? It, I mean, if this goes on, then probably some that weren't, you know, given it in September or whenever, might become, it might become necessary to give it to them in April, right? Others, when they're assessed in September, they needed it straight away in September.
The fifty million dollar.
And just so, just so you know, what we've effectively done is if it was in September, you had to get it, well, then you were told what the figure will be to get, take you right through till, correct me if I'm wrong, Kate, the end of February, right? And then obviously at some time between now and February, we'll look at the trajectory of the pandemic and decide whether that needs to be extended.
Is the twenty five million dollars that, which is restart?
Yeah.
Is that, does that still need to be included in the state budget coming up or has that been already allocated in existing arts?
No, I believe that's already allocated into, in this twenty ten, twenty eleven financial year. Obviously, it will appear in this year's state budget because we are. Obviously, it will appear in this year's state budget, because we are, we are spending it. Well, we're spending the rescue, but the restart is there, and we are, in fact, finalising the objectives and principles and programmes of restart at the moment. And given we're back up to 50%, I note we had 12 days in a row without community transmissions, and that was a good thing. Obviously, I'm advised that that might not be the case tomorrow. I believe that is today.
Today.
So, oh, today? So, yes, that's right, today. And so, you know, but anyway, if we go back and we keep having lots of zero days, then we might well go below, above 50% in terms of capacity for venues, and we all earnestly hope that happens as soon as possible.
Okay, so you might say that this isn't technically within your remit, Minister, but support within New South Wales then for freelance creatives and freelance artists, we obviously have heard a lot, I hear a lot as arts spokesperson. But we have also heard a lot during the last hearing that this is a particular issue and people are falling through the cracks and support's being given to organisations, and many of these freelancers can't get Jobkeeper, if you like. So, has the...
Anyone who has an Australian business number.
Yes, a lot of them.
Which, in my experience, most self-employed people do have can get Jobkeeper.
So, the evidence that, well, I'll pause actually for a minute. What I've heard is that, in fact, no, there was evidence in particular, I think, from the audiovisual people in terms of artists, that many freelancers are falling through the cracks and they don't have those AVNs. Have you, your department would be, Create New South Wales would be lobbied by artists who are falling through the cracks during this pandemic, I assume?
We're certainly well aware that there are some people who don't have AVNs, and to the extent that they're and, you know, obviously, that is a problem in terms of Jobkeeper. But I would say this, all of our existing arts and culture funding programmes are still being operated right now, and they are, and there are, in fact, we're looking at, and have been beefing up the project rounds, which are exactly what those sorts of performers, musicians and artists that you're talking about access, and which are their bread and butter in years outside of it.
Can I just get some clarity around what beefing up means? So, what, when you're saying beefing up, is this in the context of thousands of people?
I don't have the figures, but I'm happy to provide them to you on notice.
Okay.
Just lastly, on that financial, I think we're...
Yes, we're in the opposition term.
Last thing on that financial question, I want to acknowledge the support you've talked through, but for the, many of the venues, many of the organisations that came to see us at that last hearing, really goes back to your point, the point you made upfront, which is this isn't going to for-profit businesses. Almost all of those will have missed out on that support, the venues we were hearing from at the last hearing, and that's just a product of...
For-profit venues will all be able to, yeah, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't quite follow what you're...
I think it was really your point upfront, Minister Ha, on that significant support provided, but it won't be going to these very marginal businesses that are for-profit, theoretically for-profit.
Yeah, no, 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 I made that quite clear, that the rescue, the rescue funding is for not-for-profit independent arts organisations. However, there have been, there has, well, I'm not at liberty to go through, yeah, no, I'll just leave it there.
We might.
I just would make one point as to why we're not going, where is that? Notion, in terms of... Just because I'm sure people will want to know why I'm not talking about individual examples. We are planning to release, of course, the complete list of people who receive funding under the package in the annual report of the Department of Premier and Cabinet. Obviously, that won't be for the one that's just about to be released, that will be for the one, the next annual report, which follows, that covers the current year. Organisations that have received funding under the rescue package are able to disclose publicly if they received funding, should they wish to do so. However, it is the case, well, funding allocations under the rescue package are otherwise commercial in confidence, as it would publicly disclose an organisation's solvency position, and this may undermine their ability to generate income and philanthropy, income, for example, ticket sales.
Understood.
And philanthropy for the private secretary, or I just, but I think it's worth putting on the record, or undermine their stakeholder and commercial relationships.
No, thank you for that. I might, and it's a point well made, yeah. Minister Domino, I might return to you on the outdoor dining question, you have been an enthusiast on this question. I really want to find out, though, I think the opposition's frustration has been the pandemic's been on us all year, it was the 25th of March that urgent Covid legislation came through, we're still waiting for many of these changes to be rolled out that might allow this safer way of using the city to work. I just want a bit of a sense of how quickly you think this might move. You've confirmed publicly 16 or 20 venues down at the Rocks, part of a trial.
It'll be 16 as of the, as of next Friday, but I think next Friday is the 16th, isn't it? Next Friday, so, yes, so as of Friday, there'll be 16, but there'll be another one, so 17 or what?
Yeah, so 17 venues, the City of Sydney due to come online, I think planned...
On about the first, about the first of November.
First of November.
Or thereabouts, because it's, you know, I don't want to steal their thunder, but early November.
Yeah, but that will certainly help many venues there, but it still misses the vast bulk of venues across the state, more than, nearly 16,000 of them across the rest of the state, outside the City of Sydney, many of them in the suburbs or the towns where people are now living and working, they're not in the city they do.
I accept that.
When will this, these plans be rolled out to have a safer outdoor experience outside of the City of Sydney?
Well, I've said publicly, like, if there's a council such as Parramatta, Liverpool, whichever the council, if they have a, you know, Harry Met Sally moment, and I want what they have, they'll get it. But it's a matter for them to fix, you know, do their consultation, so I accept your frustration. The frustration's born with me as well, like, but when you're negotiating with councils...
Except you're the minister. We're allowed to both be frustrated, but you're the minister.
I know, I'm the minister, but as I said before, there are eight different agencies, and then there's different councils, and then within councils, they've got their own system, so...
But urgent legislation on the 25th of March, daylight savings already arrived.
Yeah.
When will this happen? Other cities have been able to do this, why hasn't it been able to happen in the City of Sydney so far?
It is a matter for the councils to put their hand up, and we will, we've already been constantinised our part of the role. So, you know, I can't say to a council area, you must do this, because that's a matter for them, their residents, their community, they've got to bring their community on board.
So, what's your view about why this has happened elsewhere, but it hasn't happened here? Is it that council, the fact we have that many councils and they hold the power, is it the lack of money?
There's 142 councils across New South Wales, probably about 80 or so of those in the Sydney metro.
Do you expect this, we've missed daylight saving, do you expect this to be in place before Christmas?
I am hoping and I am urging other councils, as is councillor, sorry, as is Minister Hancock, doing the same, like, you know, we want all the councils to embrace what the working relationship we've now got with the City of Sydney. Because, the reason that I asked place management to move so fast is because it's an agency inside our purview, so we can, you know, I can say to them, and I did say to them, what's the earliest possible date you can work with the shops to get them opened outdoors? 16 October, and we've been holding them to that deadline.
Minister, that's 17 venues, this is safer, why can't we move?
I thought the minister had finished, I did, but I could be wrong, Minister, had you finished?
I was about to say that, you know, so with the place management, I can move heaven and earth on that, and I've done it, and credit to place management, because we are continuing to work. But in relation, and City of Sydney, I've had that many discussions with Clovermore, again, who has to move her machinery. But I've done, what we've done with liquor and gaming has gone from essentially seven weeks to three days. If any other council across New South Wales says, we want the same to apply to us, we will do it. So, I can give you that commitment.
Yeah, and I've seen the gentle encouragement, but don't you think money would save us? Why have other cities been able to do this?
It's more than a gentle...
In normal times, this would be breakneck speed, this would be breakneck speed.
It's going to be hard for hand side.
Sorry, I apologise.
And I think it'd be very, so, just as, I think John Graham needs to wait for you to finish, before he starts, both ways.
Sorry, can I just, can I record that 33 councils in Sydney?
Yes.
So, sorry, Mr Graham.
What you're describing would be breakneck speed in ordinary times, we're in a pandemic, other cities have moved, this is safer, that's why we have to do it. I mean, the pandemic will be over by the time, on the timetable you're working to, can't we speed this up?
I am...
What would it take to speed this up? Can the Parliament help? Can we help?
Well, it's the councils, and when you say gentle encouragement, I would say it's a robust prod from me, like, if I could do any further, I would, but again, it's a matter for those councils, and your advocacy, all of our advocacy, to push the councils to put their hand up and accept that, you know, what we've done in the Rocks, what we're about to do in the City of Sydney can be done elsewhere.
It's a robust prod, but no funding, is that part of the problem here?
No, 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 I don't.
He's an enthusiast as well.
Well, I'll take, I'll take the point of order. What Mr Graham does is he asks a question, which invites a response, and then continues to talk. So, we end up with this overlap of discussion because of the way this has been done.
I accept the point of order, but I think it's happening on both sides. I'd ask both of you to restrain your enthusiasm and let it happen as a diactic process.
And, Mr Chair, I unreservedly apologise to Mr Graham.
I don't think anyone's, you're both enthusiastic, that's great.
We're both enthusiastic, that's why I'm about here.
One at a time.
Okay.
And I have one question.
I think, I think a concept for the question can be put, but rather than take more time, I'll go back to John Graham.
Minister, do you accept particularly in regional areas for some pubs that might have been able to, for example, have people wander outside where they drink into an outdoor beer garden? Now, they're required under the public health order appropriately to have patrons seated, they now have to apply for outdoor dining, and that may be slow. Do you accept that for those venues, they're actually a lot more restricted than they would have been pre-Covid?
No, my understanding is that as a result of the task force that we've worked through with place management in the City of Sydney, is that provided they go through their DA, and again, the councils will have to crunch, the councils have to do what we've done, basically get through a whole lot of red tape, but...
And venues aside, that hasn't happened, John?
Again, I can't speak for the councillors, you'd like to ask Minister Hancock, who's got more visibility in that space, but I know that the City of Sydney have been working on this for some time, and credit to Clovermore, she has been working on this for some time, and that means working with businesses as well along the way. So, when she makes the announcement in early November about X number of businesses opening up, that, she hasn't just snapped her fingers and said, open up. So, I'm hoping that this will then demonstrate to the rest of the councils in New South Wales, we are, we will move as fast as we can at your pace. Now, your question in relation to funding is, again, that is outside my purview. My purview is red tape.
Yeah.
I've slashed it.
Understood.
When it comes to funding, that's another minister.
All right, so I want to deal with one final issue, then hand to my colleague, and that's really all the discussion from the enthusiasts in the government, from you, from the treasurer, there's some others, has been about outdoor dining. There's no consideration that I can see that outdoor performance, the city of Sydney councillors push this. It is likely to be the case that where that occurs, it does trip over the many rules and regulations that are in place, but again, it's safer, it's one of the few ways we might get music back, is to have that performance outdoors.
Which, can I just ask to assist the minister, whether the honourable member could be a little clearer in his question? Which sort of outdoor performances is the honourable member referring to? Because in fact, it is the case, for example, that the Sydney Festival is going to be largely outdoor performances.
Yeah, and I too acknowledge the Sydney Symphony.
It's just not, I just think you should be clearer in your question.
Minister, I agree with that, I'm asking about the regulatory statements, and they have been quite limited to dining, but I accept the point you're making.
No, no, that's, you know, my understanding, and I'm standing to be corrected, but no doubt, Miss Webb will clarify, but my understanding is that they are permitted, and indeed, when we went down to the Rocks with Fortune of War, there was an example of that in play. When we did the announcement with the treasurer myself and Clovermore, again, we had the arts there performing, but, Miss Webb, would you like to...
I think that most cases, any restriction that you're talking about on regulation, I'd just be helpful to clarify, are you talking about a planning restriction or a legal licence restriction?
Well, I'm talking about, well, the real issue here is the complex interaction of planning restrictions, legal licence restrictions, many of them imposed by councils interacting with state laws, so...
I think the reality is, most of the restrictions are planning restrictions, and I think part of the strategy is about, part of the strategy is about a SEP, about getting the SEP amended, and I suppose the timeframe is, this is exempt and complying to allow for those live outdoor music events to be covered by the exempt and complying provisions. Have you any visibility on that timeframe?
Chair, may I just be excused for one minute, I just have to...
Oh, always, always. Mr Walton?
Just to say that when we're talking about community-based performances, so things that may be run by councils, for example, those sorts of things can already happen under the planning system. If we're talking about an outdoor event that's part of a for-profit sort of scenario, if it's part of a pub and they're allowed to operate outside as an ancillary activity, that's fine too. It's when we're talking about establishing, say, a stage on public land, for example, for profit events, that's a DA process, and I think generally that would be appropriate given the size and impact on the...
I think it's Action Eight from the, no, Tom.
Yeah, yeah, I might come back on notice, I'm going to hand to my colleague, yeah, thank you.
Minister, I just wanted to ask you a follow-up question, you said that you're about opening up the economy and not about corporate handouts, just to come back to the question that I was asking you earlier, but you then talked about the need for councils to crunch through their approvals much quicker, and you said that you've done that. Are you looking, in consultation with the Minister for Local Government, at providing councils with more resources to do that? Because that would be a key part of actually allowing a lot of these suburban centres.
No, I'm not, because that's a matter between Mr Hancock and the treasurer. But I am working with Mr Hancock wherever I can as part of the task force to slash red tape, because that's my, that's my bag.
So, who's the lead agency in the alfresco, or the outdoor dining task force?
In relation to this one, mate?
Okay, so...
I'm the minister chairing it.
You're the minister chairing it, so would recommendations around that then be just given to local government? Like, isn't there a role for you to say, to facilitate outdoor dining? A key challenge is going to be getting local government to make the approvals faster, therefore they need more resources? Like, that's basically what local government came to say, to tell us.
Right, well, again, you have to raise up with Mr Hancock, that's what I said.
Minister, I've got a comment about that. So, in most of the time, you need approval under the Local Government Act or the Roads Act for some of these outdoor dining activities. Where the Department of Planning's currently building and testing a facility through our e-planning programme to make an application for those approvals, much more streamlined, and we're hoping to roll that out in November to councils.
Yeah, and Juno, Juno told me about that lovely planning model, it's the best thing since high school, but not saying that, but your question goes to financial assistance to councils, and I think I've been asked that question about six different times, but it's the same response, I just don't have any visibility between Mr Hancock, the treasurer and the councils.
But I suppose the question is being put to you as the lead minister for, for, for making that happen. Do you accept that, that funding is part of it? In your lead minister role? Someone's got to pull it together, and that's part of the discussion has always been about the cracks. We keep getting pointed to the cracks. You're the lead minister.
Yeah, well, my, 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 in, in terms of the task force I'm leading is in relation to place management, uh, and the sites there and the City of Sydney. And these discussions, in terms of the broader piece outside of those two areas, has not come to me yet.
Sorry, the task force is only in relation to the City of Sydney?
That, that, that was our, uh, focus initially, but it was then designed to pick it up and templated it out. But our, our initial point was to focus on, because obviously, the hardest city areas has been the Rocks, because we're not getting international tourists there, and CBD, where people aren't coming in to work because they're working from home. So we're seeing, y- y- this is being ground zero in terms of impact. So that's why the task force focused on this, these two areas specifically, but with a view of ultimately getting this up and running, and then templating all of these results, uh, to the broader New South Wales.
Yeah, and, and I think the Chair and I are on the same page here, which is the, the testimony from local government in New South Wales to this committee was that there needs to be bespoke solutions for every separate local government area, but the local government is already stretched. So I'm asking you, absolutely, and I'm asking you as the lead minister now in the Alfredco, or what's it called? The, is it called the Alfredco, um?
The outdoor dining.
The outdoor dining.
I'm, I'm able to call it the Alfredco.
Whatever we want to call it, this task force, is it going to have the ability to recommend that there needs to be more funding for local governments?
I'm gonna take the point of order now. I think the question has been asked a number of times. I appreciate what you're getting at. It's an important question. Uh, this, um, something that has arisen repeatedly. I think the minister has attempted, is very best to answer it wholeheartedly on each of the six occasions. This is now the seventh, and perhaps I think the answer is, I mean, he's capable of answering for himself, but I do feel that we have explored it.
Yeah, because I, I, I'm not speaking to the other councils. I, I, I'm dealing with, if you ask me that question as, as it relates to the City of Sydney, I could give you an answer, but I, I just don't have that relation with the other councils.
So is the work then of the?
But I'm, I'm happy to offer to the other councils, uh, the, the slashing of the red tape that we've now done, uh, applied to City of Sydney and, um, the Rocks, uh, to the other councils. Absolutely, they want that.
So you're saying that the work of the task force has been now being completed?
Uh, no, I've got another task force meeting, uh, I think, next week.
Okay, so I.
And that, and then we'll see where we go from there.
Okay, and are you looking, sorry, so can you just then explain what the role of the task force is going to be going forward then?
Yeah, yes, I, what I wanted, a- again, the purpose of the task force was to zero in on the, on, on the gaping hole that is, um, the CBD, and, and in particular, the Rocks have been decimated, uh, because of COVID. Yeah, I, I can go to my local community in Ride, for example, and when I speak to a number of venues there, some, some are struggling, but some are actually doing much better than normal because people are working from home. So, you know, the treasurer and I in particular said we need to focus in on getting the jobs back into the city, getting people back in the city. So the task force was set up to do, uh, you know, outdoor dining to assist those in the Rocks and CBD in particular. Now, if there are learnings, which there are, from this, that can be used to assist other areas across the state, uh, then by all means, uh, now, if they need money, they need to raise that with Minister Hancock and the treasurer, but if they need assistance in relation to slashing red tape, absolutely, I will be there helping one hundred percent.
Well, Minister, just, yeah, um, just from a local government perspective, if I could.
Yeah.
The, um, your, your, your suggestion is that you look at what happens in Sydney through the task force, and then you may apply that as a template for other areas outside of the City of Sydney. Is that what your current strategy is?
From, from the perspective of the liquor and gaming regulatory, uh, reset.
But Minister, it's almost certainly not the right template for the reasons you've just explained, which is what's happening in the City of Sydney is vastly different to what's happening in other parts of the state, many of which local shopping strips have actually seen a boom in the pandemic. Um, not, not uniformly, but, and, and it's, and because of so many people working from home.
Yeah, I accept that.
So if the City of Sydney is not going to be, if it's not going to be the ideal template, what other consultation are you doing from the gambling perspective with those other councils?
When I say the template, Mr Chair, I mean the template in relation to the New South Wales government's response. So the City of Sydney did their piece, and they, and no doubt, they have, uh, made some, uh, you know, they had to engage with their businesses, no doubt, no different to Parramatta engaging with their businesses to say, where are opportunities to do outdoor dining there? What we've done is then fixed our processes on the back end and said, all right, now, whether you're City of Sydney, whether you're Parramatta, whether you're Liverpool, when it comes to us signing off, for, when it comes to us doing our approvals, we can template that piece out. But I absolutely accept what you're saying. You know, the situations on the ground in Parramatta or near in Liverpool might be completely different to the City of Sydney, but those councils have to do that work. And I'm hoping, I'm absolutely hoping that they would have done, started doing this a long time ago. Because we're, we're, we're ready to go.
So is there an open invitation from your office if mayors from around the, the rest of the state want to sit down and talk with you about the needs in their local community from a liquor and gaming perspective?
Absolutely. From a re, from a regulatory perspective, absolutely. From a financial perspective, go through Minister Hancock and the treasurer, but from a regulatory, like, absolutely, no doubt about it. I, I'll be there, uh, you know, I've been told by the excellent Paul Saravan, excellent. Oh, no, he's over this side. That, uh, he will turn these things around in three days. Isn't that right?
It is now.
Personally, but the organisation will?
Yes.
It's now.
Mr Coe?
That's extraordinary.
And is, is the intent, you're talking about the planning's role in this, and the co-approvals under the, um, Local Government Act and the Roads Act, maybe Mr Saravan knows where this is up to, maybe not, maybe it's Mr Walton. Um, is the intent to have a single application made, which will then get, if necessary, two or three approvals? One under the Planning Act, one under the Local Government Act, one under the Roads Act? Is that the intent, a single application?
That's the intent, that's the intent, so cutting that red tape for the.
And you guarantee that'll be done by November? Is that right, Mr Walton?
It's in testing at the moment.
That's under replying.
Which was an ambiguous answer, but I'll take it.
Yeah.
I shouldn't be a politician.
And can I add, I've just been informed that, uh, apparently liquor and gaming has already been approached by dozens of councils, Mr Chair, and will continue to work with them in November, uh, on their proposals for outdoor dining. So hopefully, you know, my hopes will realise, uh, they're underway.
Thank, thank you, Chair. Um, Minister Harwin, I wanted to just, I've just got a couple of questions about the media release that you tabled from the National Association for Visual Arts. I take it that there was a discussion between, just generally to begin with, I take it there was a discussion between Create New South Wales and the National Association for Visual Arts after the hearing?
Um, I would have to refer, I, so I know, if there was, um, I, I, I don't know about it. I'd have, I, I could ask the deputy secretary, she knows.
I'm, I'm not aware. I haven't had a conversation.
There was certainly none with the ministerial office.
It certainly would seem that way, though, given that the media release says that earlier today, Penelope Benton spoke at the hearing, and then she sought to clarify, um, some comments were made about communications from the Create New South Wales team in regard to the guidance on reopen, reopening, and that she therefore retracted and clarified. So there's the couple of pieces of information there that were provided. So for example, the Create New South Wales Arts and Culture Sector reopening information was available for several months and can be found. There's a link there. And then there's the COVID nineteen safety plan template, because we heard from quite a number of organisations, actually, that that is something, was something that they were looking for.
Yeah.
From Create New South Wales. Would it be fair to say that the communication around, uh, to the arts and culture sector around those resources was lacking?
Uh, look, I, I will ask the deputy secretary to, uh, uh, add, um, to that. Uh, it, uh, suffice us to say, um, uh, it's my expecta, expectation that Create New South Wales does, uh, the best job it can in communicating to the sector. Does it always do that? No. Um, uh, are we trying to fix that? Yes. Uh, and, uh, you know, I get that feedback too. I had it as recently as last week when I was talking, um, to an arts group at Lismore, or an arts facility, I should say, at Lismore. So I'm aware of that, uh, and I've made it very clear, uh, to the deputy secretary, uh, what my expectation is beyond that. I should probably let her comment.
Um, i- i- if I could just set some context, um, Create New South Wales has historically kind of communicated with those that are within its, um, it, it's kind of funding orbit, if you like. So, um, COVID has really required us to expand and, um, double down on the level, level, uh, style and regularity of communication with the sector. Um, we're, we're not perfect by any stretch, but we try, the team is trying extremely hard. Um, I don't want to kind of postulate on what may or may not, discussions may or may not have happened with the organisation, uh, in that media release, but we do try and be as responsive as we possibly can be, learn from our mistakes and take corrective action quite quickly. Um, we have as far as COVID, um, run a number, so in terms of all of our communication, we've run a number of roundtables, the first of which, uh, was literally the day after, I think, the, um, uh, the, the health orders, the first health order, uh, to section seven of the Public Health Act. So that was on the sixteenth of March. We had, um, a, a first roundtable on the seventeenth of March, bringing together as many CEOs as we can. We've tried to operate, we've stood up, um, Project Awake, as the minister talked about in May, because we acknowledge that the health orders are actually quite complex. Um, they require quite a lot of interaction on a whole of government level, and as, uh, both ministers, uh, ministers have talked about, trying to work better on a whole of government basis has actually been quite critical, and some of those cracks have been, um, made quite, the lights have been shot on them through COVID. So Project Awake not only just works with Create in the sector, it also brings in our health experts, um, through the chief health, chief medical officers team, uh, we work across treasury and industry and all parts of government that might need to come together to provide advice. We run roundtables, we have dedicated information set up on our website, uh, we have a phone number people can call. We've got Rebecca Dean doing a marvellous job as a single point of contact and expertise. Uh, we have escalations, paths for decisions. I'll take any phone call that comes to me and, and email. They talk quite regularly with our ministers' office, so we try and do the absolute best that we can, um, and make corrections. Uh, whenever people appear before inquiries, it's perfectly appropriate for the team to have a look at the transcripts, and if there is a corrective course of action, we'll absolutely, absolutely take it. But I'm not commenting specifically on, on the media release, but I would expect my team are looking for that information to say, have we got it right? Do we need to do something differently?
Thank you, Ms Boyd, the, because we've got several, uh, surveys, if you like, that were presented to the, um, committee. There's, uh, there was, uh, well, there's one in the media release, that's a different one to the one. So we've got the Theatre Network Australia, which has statistics such as only five point five six percent of respondents were satisfied with the New South Wales government's communication, sixty-six point six seven were unsatisfied or very, very unsatisfied. Um, similarly, only eleven percent of respondents are satisfied with Create New South Wales communications about the advocacy they are undertaking for the sector. Seventy-two per, seventy-two percent were unsatisfied or very unsatisfied. That's Theatre Network Australia, and then also the National Association for, um, Visual Arts has also undertaken a survey, and they say eighty percent of surveyed.
In the absence of a Chair or a Deputy Chair, I'm just going to respectfully ask if we could get to a question. Given they are tabled.
Seeing, uh.
But there was, that we're curious about this, but you mentioned the roundtables.
I'm gonna take a point of order. Like, this is actually an inquiry into the government's response to COVID. Um, now, I know this evidence was given, and I think I might have raised the point, that, that some of this starts to get well and truly beyond the government's response to COVID. And I think what, what we really seem to be going on to an extent is the budget estimates, George. So I, I really do.
To the point of order.
I really do, I really do invite that we address it in the context of COVID.
The question I'm asking is a survey that was undertaken about the government's response to the impact of this COVID on the sector and the support they're receiving from the government, so it is a hundred percent in line with the purpose of this inquiry.
To the point of order. I'm not sure that there was a question for it, so I'm not quite sure.
I was just about to try and get there.
I might just fall on the point of order in this way. I didn't hear the member step outside the terms of that, but I might ask. Take some dental guidance from the council. When questioned.
Uh, Jono Johnson would be proud.
So the question was getting to, because you mentioned the roundtables at the beginning of the year, but the, both of these surveys are very recent for these arts, uh, community, communities of artists. How, what additional measures are you putting in place in response to the most recent surveys of additional artists, um, uh, artists to improve the government's communication to that sector?
If, if I'm, I'm.
To individual artists.
But if I could just clarify my point, which was.
I, I actually was unsighted, and I would like to hear that part of the, the last part of the question again, if that's all right. I was just distracted by my Jono Johnson joke.
So essentially, since, uh, what Ms Boyd was talking about in terms of the roundtables and consultation with the sector earlier this year, we have two very recent surveys that have the statistics I've read out before of the individual artists throughout the, the state. As a result of these surveys and the responses, what additional measures, uh, is Create New South Wales putting in place to address these, what seem to be significant concerns?
Well, look, um, I, uh, uh, obviously, all feedback, uh, is crucial, and, um, uh, the deputy secretary, uh, mentioned how Create is already responding to matters that were raised in, in, I'm gonna call them the documents, um, uh, from Theatre New South Wales. And I haven't actually, uh, uh, seen either of the documents yet, but I'm, I'm not going to just dismiss them just because I haven't seen them. Um, uh, and that's important, but I think that, uh, it, it's worthwhile that we have some balance. Uh, and it is important to note that Create New South Wales also surveys, uh, uh, funding recipients. Uh, and there was in fact done, a, a, a survey done of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty applicants to, um, uh, the funding rounds that year. Uh, uh, forty-four of the percent of the responses, in fact, and this is interesting to note, came from people who'd never applied for funding before. Um, uh, and, uh, so that's important, that's interesting. But they were, when they were asked about the application process, fifty-nine percent responded positively. When they were asked about the efficiency of the, of the application process, sixty-three respond, percent responded positively. When asked about the ease of filling out application forms, fifty-seven percent responded positively, so that was a drop. And we're actually working on that. We're fixing all the forms. Now, this is an important one, because this is about the issue you raised, communication. Was the amount of information available to complete the application, um, uh, how was that rated? Well, it was in fact the most highly rated aspect, with sixty-six responded positive, percent responding positively. So these are people at the coalface, people who actually apply, whether they had applied before or were new, whether they were successful or unsuccessful. Uh, and they were also asked, was the website and online help, um, used? Uh, uh, and ninety, uh, web, web line and on, online help were used extensively, with ninety-three percent of respondents using some type of online support from Create New South Wales. So, um, I, I think, I think it, there needs to be some balance. I'm not dismissing those surveys, uh, because I think they have valuable information. And I've already conceded that I personally think there've been problems with communications, and I've had that feedback directly myself. But I do think Create is, um, addressing this, and I, it, it is my hope that they'll be better in the future.
And just a point of clarification, we've had, well, webinars quite regularly, at key points, um, right up until, I think, as recently as the end of September, so the twentieth of September, so we try and keep that. Um, not only that large group of, um, uh, of the sector for discussion, but also then focused discussions with particular groups, whether that's live music or theatre or cultural institutions.
Yeah.
Okay.
And always with health with us, this is a health issue.
Sorry, Kay. They're all on the, um. Sorry, Kate. They're all on the, um, the website, Kate. And in fact, there are three, three scheduled for the next week. One, um, which is on the fifty percent capacity issue, which is on the ninth of October. Uh, another on the twelfth of October, uh, in relation to COVID advice, COVID safe advice for singing. And then the same day, there's one on COVID, COVID safe advice for bands, orchestras and musical groups. So, uh, uh, but they're all there on the website, which I, um, am sorry that, well, surprised us. No, I'm not, just not going to go there.
Okay. Back to the fifty million dollars rescue and restart. When does the restart start?
Uh.
The twenty-five million dollar spend? Okay. What does that, what does that mean?
Well, Kate, uh, it's very, uh, look, I did start to, um, uh, talk about that, um, before when there were, uh, questions, when I think in relation to one of your questions.
I think as well, just to, just to throw in, while you're looking for that, because one of the respondents to the survey from Theatre Network Australia talked about that, and they did say it's one of the largest in the country in terms of the, the fund, but there hasn't been much transparency, transparency around how it's distributed and for how long it will last and for when restart begins.
Well, I think, um, uh, sorry, were you saying that was a response to the survey?
Yes.
Well, I can, uh, so first of all, in terms of, uh, Create New South Wales funded clients, I don't, uh, and even people who've applied been unsuccessful, I'm really, I would be surprised if there was that, um, uh, if people weren't aware of how to do it, because they had, that, that has been communicated to them. Uh, and it, it's really as simple as, as just ringing up and, and people will be told what they need to do and then they get into the system. And there are very large, I mean, I can go through the numbers, but there are a very large number of people who, uh, of organisations in the system being assessed. So I think it, organisations are pretty well aware of it. In terms of restart, restart, it's entirely understandable that people wouldn't be aware of how that's going to work because we actually haven't said anything about it yet. Um, uh, and because we're principally focused on rescue at the moment. Uh, and we're still, uh, considering, um, uh, objectives and principles of, of restart. But that's now, uh, now nearing, uh, its conclusion and we will be saying something soon. We're designing it to ensure that the companies, uh, are restarted in the most effective way. And there are some, and we are actually, well, I, I personally, as I go around and meet, um, people, test bits of it, um, to see what people think and we're getting a pretty good response. So we're, we're now, um, consulting and, uh, of course I've done it on an informal basis. Create New South Wales done it on a more formal basis, as I understand it. Kate might add something to this, with likely recipients about the sort of targeted aid, uh, people, uh, will, will need. But really, stage two, uh, restart, uh, has to take account of health guidelines. And the problem is they're changing quite quickly, particularly as they relate to social distancing and audience attendance numbers. So we were at a fairly advanced stage and then we changed to fifty percent. So that has to be taken into account. If things continue going well by, well, certainly by early next year, but I'm hopeful even sooner than that, it might be possible to go considerably higher than fifty percent. So that's holding us up. But look, you've got it, we've just got to, uh, get it out now because at fifty percent, it's clearly the state, it clearly the case that people are restarting. So there will be something released very soon on restart and it will be widely communicated.
Okay. I just wanted to, I'm just conscious of time, it's probably up in a sec. So, um, I just wanted to get it, just to get a sense of the, the arts and cultural ecosystem, if you like. And the fact that you've both, um, minister, referring to funded clients. I sense in a way that if organisations and individuals don't receive funding from Create New South Wales, it's difficult to, for them. That could be part of the issue with the, uh, general discontent we're hearing is that lots of artists, if they don't receive funding, they don't feel like they're getting support.
Well, all I would say.
How do they, like, so the question is how, how do they get support other than financial? And how are they communicated with if they don't receive, um, if you're, they're not in your database for funding purposes?
Well, it's happening because there are people who are receiving, um, uh, rescue money that are not annually funded organisations, right? Um, uh, and, uh, so therefore, or, or multi-year funded organisations. So I can assure you it is happening. Um, and, uh, I can assure you in terms of the, um, the, uh, quick response funding, which, uh, is generally a maximum of five thousand dollars, most of them are not funded organisations either. So, um, it is happening, but, uh, deputy secretary, do you want to comment on that at all?
The example is like organisations that we've heard about in terms of losing funding, like Riding New South Wales and South Coast Riders Centre.
That's a different matter entirely, because that's not anything to do with COVID.
Yeah.
But I'm, it, it, uh, it really honestly is nothing to do with COVID.
Okay. Well, I can come back to it if, if you find, yeah.
It's not, it's probably not even technically within the, the jurisdiction of this, um, inquiry, or terms of reference of this inquiry. But I'm certainly happy to answer or talk to you about those issues, um, on another occasion.
Great. Thank you. Uh, Minister Dominella, I might just turn back to you, just, oh, so a range of these, uh, organisations, these venues turned up and asked for help either on, uh, restrict, uh, o- either on regulation or on financial support. Some of that was urgent and immediate. Some of it's more long-term as we rebuild, knowing that, uh, help is on the way in the longer term. Um, in a recent media report on the first of October in the Sydney Morning Herald, um, the, uh, I'll just quote from it in relation to one of the, um, issues that I, I think you know is close to my heart, the restrictions on music. Um, the article said this, a New South Wales government spokesman, spokesperson said, the state would empower local councils to lift unnecessary restrictions on live music in their development applications and to adopt pro-live music regulations in their planning documents. That's a very welcome, uh, statement. Perhaps a change in where the government position's been up till now.
From this round?
Well, I'm, it's a New South Wales government spokesperson.
From planning?
It does not indicate, uh, whether it's from planning or from elsewhere. Uh, but confirming that councils would be, uh, empowered to lift unnecessary regulations. Oh, it's a very welcome switch. I'm just interested to know, um, are you aware of this?
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not privy to it. Maybe you're still.
Just, just in relation to the, the planning rules, um, it's open to any proponent to talk to council about amending their development consent and they can do that. Some councils I know waive fees and process those things really quickly where there's low impacts. Um, um, but other than that, I'm not sure what that means.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So I'll leave, I'll leave that and return to a matter which is, um, uh, squarely in your domain. And that is one of the other, uh, restrictions, which is the, uh, and, and I want to acknowledge upfront that you have indicated and you've already introduced legislation to waive a number of these restrictions. One, you haven't, in fact, the government, uh, voted against it, which was the flat-out bans on live music in about ninety-five venues across the state. It leaves those venues and those communities in a situation where, uh, they can be subject to at any volume, uh, Swedish death metal from an iPod being blared out of that venue, uh, but no live music. If a warm live human being is employed to perform something far more soothing, if Kate Sobrano walks off the street to, uh, perform jazz, that's illegal. Surely you can change your mind on this issue.
And I'm very sympathetic to, uh, what you're trying to achieve. And, and can I compliment you for, you know, your advocacy because it's been very strong? In fact, uh, you know, even though it wasn't committee's recommendation, uh, you came up with, uh, delivering the nightmare. And, uh, which is appropriate given Labour's reputation for delivering nightmares, but, um, you know.
I'll take the compliment.
In all seriousness, I, I, kudos to you. But, um, like, in, in relation to that situation, uh, as much as I really wanted to come across, I, I, I struggled because ultimately it required a bespoke application, um, to each event. So for example, there could have been a, you know, Kate Sobrano could have been, who's a fantastic singer, as we all know, dulcet tones if she's singing jazz. But it could have been in a, uh, in a suburban pub, right next door, uh, to a mum that's working night shift. Uh, so that's going to be a completely different situation to somebody that's on the main drag in Newtown. And, and that's why, Minister Wise, subject.
I think I'll let the minister finish.
And, and, and that's why we, we couldn't agree as much as I agree with, I think you're coming from a good space. I just, we had to delegate that responsibility back to councils to consult with their communities because there was not a one-size-fits-all approach.
And you're not taking a policy position against Swedish death metal, are you? Which is the more melodic form of death metal, is my understanding.
Well, I think, I think I should, Mr. Chair.
You're giving it the green light. This is my issue. You're giving it the green light. This is, at any volume. Yeah, this is, this mother can be subjected at any volume to an iPod, playing that all night. Uh, but live music is banned.
You're using a benign, uh, example. There could be, you know, a, a contrasting example which could cause grief.
No, it's a, it's a, it's a fundamental disagreement with the method of regulation which your agency is using. We should regulate noise. We shouldn't ban music.
Yeah.
You're allowing the death metal to play, but Kate Sobrano, illegal.
No, I, I'm saying that, um, I'm encouraging councils to look at their own backyard and, uh, to open up where they can and as quickly as they can.
All right. I'll, I'll leave it there for now and hand to my.
Um, Mr. Hammond, I wanted to ask you some questions.
Uh, uh, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Saraband, did you? Was there somebody who wanted to add something?
He did, actually.
Yes.
If you want to move on, it's an ad fee.
An iPod wouldn't be played at any volume. Most of the restrictions aren't live music and amplified music. So amplified would also be captured under the existing arrangement. So that dichotomy of Kate Sobrano singing versus the iPad wouldn't, wouldn't work.
Yeah. I mean, we can, we can look at the individual examples. That is the case sometimes, is not the case sometimes. You'd concede that, Mr. Saraband, wouldn't you? This is a patchwork.
More than, more than most, it's an amplified music condition.
Uh, yes, except in ninety-five cases. That's ish.
I'm talking about the ninety-five cases.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. We might continue this. I will. There's a literary advice you, you were applying really, just to, to show an extreme example.
I'm happy to hand it my colleague.
Will I come back to that? The, the government has no policy against Swedish death metal. There is no policy position.
No, I reserve my position on that, Mr. Chair. I reserve my, you know, those Swedes.
Reserve the position, all right.
Yep.
Um, okay. Minister Hammond, I wanted to ask you about, we've heard about, um, the efforts of the Outdoor Dining Task Force to really open up the city, um, particularly, uh, coming into summer in the evenings so that people can enjoy it. I wanted to ask you about the efforts that you may be making as a minister for arts to open up our cultural institutions. I mean, the art gallery closes at five, the refurbished Hyde Park Barracks, they're only open a couple of days a week and they close at five as well. Um, even the state library is only open until eight. Have you got plans, um, maybe to start the Art After Hours program again at the art gallery? What, what are we doing to, to bring people into the city to, um, on those major cultural institutions?
I, I think I might take that question on notice, um, Courtney, because I'm not happy with the, the data in front of me. And I'd rather give you a complete answer than a partial one, but we'll get back to you as quickly as we can on that.
Okay. Uh, is it something that you're looking at?
Oh, absolutely. Uh, uh, but I just don't have, uh, I, I, I don't feel confident I can give you a complete answer. And I'd rather just give you a complete answer. But yes, the cultural institutions all have restart programs. Uh, and, uh, we got them reopened as quickly, uh, as we can. They're all subject to social distancing, uh, rules, right? Uh, and they're, uh, they are progressively increasing the amount of activities that they have. And once obviously we get into the sta, into, um, uh, a position where, uh, we have fewer restrictions on how many people can actually go through them, uh, then that's exactly what we'll be doing. Uh, and, and all of them have plans. But in terms of me individually particularising each of those plans, I need to do that, um, on note, uh, uh, by providing you a supplementary answer, if that's, if that's okay with you. Obviously, the, um, uh, art gallery at the moment, uh, has the Archibalds on, uh, and it's got, um, uh, tremendous, I mean, but they're ticketed arrivals to ensure that we, uh, that they're COVID safe. Uh, uh, but it's getting a tremendous response as the, uh, as the Argies always do. Um, there are plans within, I think, week two, within, uh, a matter of weeks to open, um, uh, the Streton Exhibition, which will be spectacular. Um, the, uh, and, uh.
I went and saw Van Gogh the other, it was fantastic, amazing.
Van Gogh is in fact not.
I know. I'm just saying, it's a great job they're doing.
Not an activity of the art gallery, but, um, Van Gogh is, I'm told, magnificent.
It's about the economy, I don't know.
But yes, uh, so all of that is going to happen. Um, uh, and, uh, uh, we will supply information to you on notice in terms of the individual plans of each of the cultural institutions.
Yeah. I mean, the point you make about the Archibald is, is spot on. You know, it's a, you think about the long weekend, people could have come into the city, enjoyed that and then perhaps gone out for a meal. These are things that we can be doing to reopen the city. Is it something that the government's looking to do?
Oh, absolutely. And the cultural institutions will play their role. And you'll notice that in this excellent document, there are all sorts of recommendations about what the CIs can be doing. Uh, and we're, um, pursuing those.
Yeah. I mean, in that document, it says seventy-eight percent of people want active nighttime activities that don't.
Yep.
So here's something that they could be doing.
But what's important to remember is of course that the CIs will have to be funded to be able to do that.
Absolutely.
If that, if we extend our operating hours. So obviously in terms of the implementation of that report, um, large parts of it will need to be, um, uh, will go, will need to go through the budget process, right? So that is, that's, that's the strategy. Now, uh, individual measures in there and there are large numbers of them that Create New South Wales, um, have, well, not ownership of, but will lead on. Uh, uh, we'll, uh, we will do so and we will push and we will adv- advocate strongly for. Uh, and, um, uh, but of course all of them have to go through the budget process.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I mean, you know, it is, it's a document that clearly outlines a, a strategy here, but, and I appreciate there is funding that needs to be attached.
And there are all sorts of really interesting ideas that I've come up with, which, uh, to ambush treasury with, which, with a couple of more, a couple more good things that say, oh, they've recommended that, I can now pursue this. But anyway, not on this occasion. Uh, Victor, uh, I'll leave it for another time.
Would you like us to make a non-publication order over that?
Sorry.
Can I just ask you then, what are you then looking at more broadly across the rest of the city and across the rest of the state to do similar kinds of things in, around New South Wales? Will there be support for other kinds of cultural institutions?
Well, in restart, what we're planning, which is ma, again, mainly to, uh, focused on independent arts organisations. Our particular focus will be on removing some of the risks of, um, uh, particularly as it relates to the performing arts, uh, on mounting new productions, right? Uh, and that is, uh, particularly relevant to regional touring. Uh, and it's actually arts in the regions that, um, are at the greatest risk, uh, from COVID. Because people act, I mean, every performance needs, uh, to have, um, you know, money spent on developing a production. But when you tour it, there are a whole lot of other risks as well. And those risks, uh, uh, multiply for regional touring. So we'll be focusing on how we deal with those. Uh, and we'll also be, uh, a focus, but there will also be opportunities for, uh, in, for independent arts organisations to, um, uh, bid for specific, um, uh, funding as well for specific, um, restart initiatives. But, um, that gives you a little bit of a taste of some of the things that, that we're looking at. But we're certainly going to use that, um, uh, that, the, what have we got, twenty-five million for restart, to kick things off in a big way, um, at the end of this year and the beginning of next year.
I've just got one quick final question, which was, um, you mentioned you read the transcript, so you would have seen the testimony from the local government in New South Wales, which said, regional venues run by councils have actually suffered a lot of job losses. Is there any specific assistance or are they eligible for any of the other grants programs? Is there any specific assistance or are they eligible for any of the other grants programs?
Well, I would make the point that, um, uh, the, uh, the local government sector has had um, a significant allocation of money from the state government to deal with some of these sorts of issues. It's, uh, to the whole sector, it's $395 million. So it's not an in, um, it, 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 it's a, it's a sizable amount and councils should be. Um, it really frustrates me sometimes when councils think that arts, their arts and cultural activities are optional add-ons. It is the core business of local government in their area to be funding arts and cultural, um, uh, activities. And I would hope that some of the money that they're receiving under that, under that allocation will be used to support those activities. Having said that, in our restart funding, uh, where, uh, so just recently I was talking to Julian Louis from NORAPA at Lismore, some of you may be aware of that. Particularly, uh, NORAPA is an independent arts organisation, but it has the contract to run the Lismore City Hall, uh, which is a performing arts venue that is in the ownership of Lismore City Council. We were particularly talking through what he, what NORAPA will need to, uh, which is not that different to what councils will need um, to get their, um, uh, performance spaces in, um, regional towns up and running again. So they have proper programmes for, for next year. Uh, and there will be some measures in restart that will be specifically targeted uh, at, um, uh, what some of those regional performance spaces require to have a proper programme of their own shows and touring shows there next year.
Ms Kate, come on.
Thank you. Um, similar to what Ms Courtney Husos was talking about in terms of evidence from local government, New South Wales. They also suggested, and I recognise that this is potentially a question for planning, but they suggested that the national construction code needs to be changed so that small scale arts and cultural offerings can be, which are essential, they said, to keep the sector practising, can be, um, held in pop-up spaces like warehouses, which is safe. Has there been any consultation?
This has been something we've, that we've been looking at for quite some time, actually. It was something that, uh, Ms Foy's predecessor, Alex O'Mara, was particularly interested in. She's actually gone, she came from planning, she's a planning woman, has gone back to planning and is now in fact in charge of the public spaces. But it's something that Alex worked on a lot with Kerry Glasscock, activating spaces. Uh, but it was recognised at the time that most of the changes would need to be made by planning. So it would probably be more appropriate if.
Yeah, I can just back to that. So, so, um, in fact, it's one of the, um, action items is listed in the 24 hour economy strategy. So it is something that we're working on. Um, I know that South Australia has already made some changes to the way their code applies there. So at the moment, we're looking at, um, how do we develop the right planning controls to make sure what we do in terms of allowing buildings to be used for other users, um, that they can be used in a safe way? So, um, yes, very much, um, we will look to vary out of the national construction code, um, to facilitate some of those things.
Okay. Well, the good news is we have Ms Webb here and a lot of this would fall within your bailiwick. Um, so it's very fortunate we have you here. What's happening with the changes to the construction code, Ms Webb?
Um, I'd have to say on notice, um, whether it's being raised at the national level. Um, I could certainly get, um, the New South Wales representative on the code, Mr Tann, seek to talk to that.
Yeah, what we would do is, what we would do is seek to, um, vary out of the code once we do our statutory consultation processes and the like, um, through regulation. Then there's a further process at the national level to formally vary out, but for all intents and purposes, once we do have regulatory changes, it'll apply.
But the construction code will be largely overseen by your, your part of the monster that is the department, that's right.
We do talk.
We're, yes, we're a member of the National Committee, um, so as Mr Walton said, um, this would be a New South Wales variation, but would be something that would also.
So is a New South Wales variation on the cards?
It is.
That's, and what's the timeframe?
Um, we would hope to be consulting on that by the end of the year.
And is that going to be led by, by planning or by Anderson, by Minister Anderson?
No, this will be planning, but we will talk.
We will do the heavy lifting on it, um, in terms of, um, ministerial responsibility.
Okay. Minister Domanello, um, have you seen any or have you heard of any heightened impact as in relation to pokies? Any heightened impact as a result of COVID on people who are, because we heard from Faire and the Alliance for Gambling Reform uh, as well, and I think it's fair that we put some of those to you as well. Have you heard evidence that COVID has had a more detrimental impact on, um, people with gambling problems or people increasing the number of people who have become addicted? What evidence are you hearing?
Well, I'm happy for Ms Webb to answer in detail, but just anecdotally, it's, it's, it's quite obvious that gambling numbers through pokies have increased. Uh, and that's notwithstanding the fact that we're in a recession. Uh, and, and the fact that money is now coming from other sources, for example, through Jobkeeper farms, through access to super. Uh, so it, there's no doubt in my mind that this issue, which has been alive for a number of years, uh, has, has reached a critical point, but maybe Ms Webb's got some more concrete.
Just going to add in relation to online gambling, um, the point of consumption tax data definitely shows that there's an increase in online gambling in addition, yeah.
Thank you. Have you heard any evidence or suggestion that new pokies are being, poker machines are being bought or leased by venues to be able to cope with the cost of the social, to be able to cope with the measures that are being placed upon them? Have you heard anything like that? For example, I have, there is one local pub that I have that is in Redfern that has, was closed during COVID, was pokies free, has reopened and now has pokies in, is a completely different pub as a result, has reopened after COVID. And I just wondered whether that was a concern or whether you're seeing a trend of more venues.
That's news to make of it.
Um, I'm not aware of any increase in number of poker machines. In fact, the trend has been down and as far as I'm aware, it's still down. I mean, there may be a particular example where someone has moved, had the permission to have a poker machine, didn't, wasn't using it and now is using it, but overall the trend is downwards.
And that, and that was the issue. We, obviously because of the four square metre rule and social distancing, we had to turn off a number of machines. Yet the revenue has increased and that's, that's why I think we're all, um, concerned about what's happened over the last six months.
I'm aware there's reforms in place. I won't ask you too many questions about that. That's probably all my questions, Chair.
Well, we may have an early break for you, ministers. I'll go to the government.
Thank you, Chair. Um, thank you, ministers, for coming today. Um, I have an extensive list of questions which should take about three hours. I'm joking. Um, I just have two for Minister Domanello and one quick correction for Mr Harman, if I may. Uh, I just wanted to, Minister Domanello, thank you, um, and in particular your departmental staff in what must have been an extremely difficult time and the ask on their time and their resources. And just ask you to convey to them our thanks for them stepping up and turning things around so very quickly. Um, I'm sure it hasn't been, um, an easy or relaxing process for them and so, um, I'm sure my colleagues would agree that we're all very grateful for their very, very hard work. Um, and one example of that was the Fortune of War, which you mentioned. And I just wanted to, uh, thank you for your responsiveness on that issue. Um, and, uh, and the fact that there was a concrete example of one particular issue which could have been sorted out and was very quickly, as I understand it. Um, if you could just comment on that.
Yeah, that was a, thanks Natalie. So that, that was an example where basically, um, the, the venue operator had two pathways, uh, one which would have been to get one licence to cover the indoor and the outdoor. And, and that pathway probably would have taken a little bit more time. So understandably, uh, as, as if you're a business owner, you look for the path of least resistance. Uh, he, he went for, um, uh, he went for two separate ones and one didn't extend to the other. So, uh, it was a, a technical breach that, uh, we managed to cure. So, and again, I want to congratulate, um, Mrs Saraband for, uh, for helping us out so quickly. Because ultimately, and it goes to a lot of questions that the community has raised today, like, you know, it's going to be much, much easier to save businesses than to create new ones. And, and it's not a problem just for our governments, it comes around the world. So if we can help our businesses now, um, that's, that's our preference.
And you've been an evangelist for.
I just have one question on this and then.
No, you've had two hours. If I may, just like to continue my line of questions. Thank you, Chair. Um, you've been an evangelist for reducing red tape, for cutting through, um, and if anything good has come out of this awful COVID pandemic, it's a new world where this is able to be done responsibly and quickly. Would you agree?
Yeah, absolutely. And it's, I, I think one of, uh, again, you don't want to count your chickens because I still think we've got many, many months to go to the end of this pandemic. But, um, one of the things that we've realised here is because we've been, we're digitally significantly more mature than any other place in the country, we're able to turn things around. So for example, when the Victorian border issue cropped up, you know, literally, uh, the agency were given about 48 hours to turn that around. Now, if we had to start from scratch, that's something that at best would take three, four weeks. But because they already had that, uh, the muscle memory, they could literally just pick it up and go. Um, whether it was that or, you know, handing out money, or even the COVID safe check-in app. You know, that's building our digital resilience so that we can open up to more and more venues in a safe way. Because that way we can then notify, uh, patrons and menus if they've gone to a hotspot area or an infected area. So these are some of the things that our state's doing that other states have not done and, uh, they have not been tested on yet. So we've been around, we've been around the lap a few times, um, and, you know, there's still a lot more we can do. But, yeah, thank you for the acknowledgement.
On the strategy, the, um, the nighttime economy strategy, I just wanted to acknowledge the work of my colleagues who were on the inquiry and the advocacy of Honorable John Graham and Ms Kate Fairman and our colleagues who worked really hard on that and thank them for the opportunity to have worked with them. But also thank the government for its responsiveness, um, to each of those recommendations. Um, Minister Harman, I also just want to thank you for your responsiveness in the art sector. And I know that you and your team have been, um, working around the clock to, and I know how worried you were personally about insolvencies and issues with the art sector. So thank you for your advocacy and your work there. And also to your teams who I'm sure have not been resting easy also. Um, I just have one administrative matter, if I may, Chair, just, um, earlier in Minister Harman's evidence. I think at about 1.20 in Hansard, and I didn't raise it at the time because I didn't want to interrupt the flow. But I'm sure just a very brief, um, correction. I think you referred to, um, Ms Kate Fairman's question about the $25 million, um, and the restart fund and referred to the 2010, 2011 budget. I think you probably meant to say the 2020, 21 budget.
Yes.
Thank you. If we could just, it might be easier to correct that now. I'm sorry, it's a tiny thing, but I just want to get that on the record now. I just want to thank you both and all your staff and your teams for that.
And Ms Webb, can I just correct something? I made reference to Paul Saraband helping out in relation to Fortune of War. In fact, it was Marcel Savary. So, uh, it's just like, speak to Paul all the time in relation to Task Force. So he's my go-to. So thank you, Marcel.
Thank you for fixing it.
Well, we'll call this the corrections phase. Anything else? Just because I'm going to put this to health and I don't want them to bounce it back to, to, to your two portfolio responsibilities. The, um, in terms of what is an entertainment facility for the purpose of the public health orders, it's said to be theatre, cinema, music hall, concert hall, dance hall and the like, which is kind of ambiguous ending, but does not include a pub or a registered club. We then go to what the definition of a pub is. It says pub means licensed premises under the Liquor Act 2007, the principal purpose of which is the retail sale of liquor for consumption on the premises, dot, dot, dot. So where does a small bar that's primarily a music venue fit in that? If the purpose is for live music venue, but they get a majority of their income through the bar? Do they, are they within the pub? Are they within the entertainment facility? Is it based upon revenue? What's the primary purpose test? Mr Saraband, please.
Can I have your jump?
Do you want to jump in?
Sure. Um, so the licence class is really what matters here. So you could have a entertainment facility that, or an entertainment venue rather, um, that has a on-premise licence, which may be a nightclub licence or an entertainment type licence. I think that's a differentiation, in my opinion, that the Public Health Order makes between a place that's, say, a small bar, which is primarily purpose is the supply of alcohol versus a venue which has a licence but his primary purpose is, is supply of entertainment.
So is the purpose test, do you reference the licence for the purpose test? Is it, is it based on class of licence? Is that how you're reading it, Mr Saraband?
That's how I read it.
I just, the, the, given the public health orders don't talk about the class of licence, they just talk about, and I'm reading directly from it, primary purpose of which is, um, yeah, how a venue is going to navigate that?
In many ways, the, the venue may have a licence which doesn't necessarily fit neatly with actual business model. So a entertainment, like a live music venue that's operating purely on a hotel licence, um, could be, could have the same size and operation as a, as an on-premise licence that provides live music.
So, so out of those two categories, the second one is not caught and the first one is caught by the definition of pub?
By pub under, under the health order?
The principal purpose of which is the retail sale of liquor.
Yeah, and you'd have to meet, you'd need to meet the primary service test in order to get the licence in the first place. So if the, the, um, the question of what sort of licence type is actually rather a mid one, it's, it's what the, if the primary purpose is for sale of service alcohol and that's the liquor licence that was issued for it, my understanding by, by the way that's defined in the public health order, it would be out.
So if a, if a small bar, if a small live music facility had one class of licence that was, was trapping them within the definition of pub, is there another licence they can apply for that will get them out of that definition so as they can fall within the broad?
Trapping them outside of entertainment.
So, so they can be brought within the definition of the entertainment facility? Is there, what's the class of licence that would get them out of the definition of pub?
I don't think it's a straightforward answer. If you look at something like the venues that do have, um, like, say, the entertainment centre, for example, which I assume the public health order is trying to refer to, yes, they will have a liquor licence. Um, I can look up that liquor licence and tell you what, what class it was to give you some clarity.
Well, well, I suppose we have to hear for some clarity on the public record for those small live music venues. Is there a class, if, if, if they think their primary purpose is providing live music, to which they have some food and alcohol attached to it to make it a going venue, is there a class of licence they can apply for, um, that will allow them to get the benefit of the, the 50% rule? And therefore move from the definition of pub to the definition of an entertainment, um, venue under the public health order?
I think in limited circumstances, that might be the case for some venues, but I, again, I, it's a, it's a very sort of case, not case by case, but it's a quite situational.
But it'd be very, it'd be, they'd have to move from being, this is precisely the point, that they're trapped as on a small bar licence or a hotel licence or a club licence. They'd really have to move to being on a theatre licence.
Yeah.
Or a, you know, music hall, dance hall. I mean, these don't really exist in licensing. Uh, well, they don't operate in the real world.
They're all on-premise licences which can cover anything from a hairdresser through to a restaurant?
So I suppose, let's say the, say the factory, um, in, um, in Enmore. Um, it's, it's, I suppose, 1,200 people maybe at maximum. It has a liquor licence. Um, would that fit within the definition of pub, Mr Saraband? Would that be, would you accept that that's the principal purpose of that place is not the retail sale of liquor for consumption?
I'd have to look at the liquor licence itself, because I don't have it off the top of my head. But again, the liquor licence itself is issued on the basis of what the business is, is seeking. So the applicant doesn't come to the licensing authority and say, I would like to open a venue that plays live music. Um, I, you know, give me a live music venue licence. They seek a pub licence. They will go through the different licence types to see what constraints are on each and make a decision on what licence they should seek.
All right. So Minister. All right. So Minister, um, perhaps it is within your portfolio area to look at a small live music venue licence category, create that category, because it seems to be that's where a lot of the friction point and pressure point is.
I'm happy to take on this and speak to the agency about it, but, uh, it might be a faster route to get, um, uh, you know, to craft something out of the Public Health Order. But I'm happy to take on those.
And we want to put those, we'll obviously put those questions to the other minister. But at, at the moment, these places are going to be called across.
I understand the legitimate questions you're raising. And, you know, unfortunately, the pandemic has given, uh, given light to a lot of these gray areas.
Yeah, and look, and I appreciate particularly the help, not to minimise what the ministers have done, but Mrs. Saraband, your engagement on it. I think it's, it's tricky and that where the licensing and the public health order is intersect is a problem for all those businesses.
The public health order is there to cover all, all types.
Um, thank you very much. Um, that concludes this session. I think we're back again at three o'clock.